Good evening. Welcome to the October 5th regular meeting of the Rockville Center Board of Education. Please rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gavin, recognition of students? Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask Dr. Walsh, our high school principal, to please come to the podium and introduce some of our students who have earned some spectacular recognition. Dr. Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Gavin, and thank you to the board for inviting us here tonight to recognize these outstanding students whom I'm about to speak about. So I'd like to start just by recognizing a group of students who earned National Recognition Award honors from the College Board National Recognition Programs. These programs celebrate students' hard work in high school and showcase their strong academic performance. The academic honors for rural area, Black, Indigenous, and/or Latino students are an opportunity for students to share their strong academic achievements with colleges and scholarship programs. The criteria for eligible students include a GPA of 3.5 or higher, PSAT, NMSQT, or PSAT 10 assessment scores that are within the top 10% of assessment takers in each state for each award program, or earned a 3 or higher on two or more AP exams in the ninth or 10th grade. These students also attend school in either a rural area or small town, or identify as African-American, Black, Hispanic, American, Latino, or Indigenous Native. We are so proud of these exceptional students and are very happy to recognize them. Congratulations to Sean Clarin, Matthew Mata, Elena Mingarance, Allison Polino, Noel Prince, and Cal Vascones. Congratulations. The next set of students that will be recognized are students who qualified as National Merit Commended Students. These students finished in the top 2% to 3% nationally on the PSAT exam, which puts them in the top 34,000 among all high school students across the nation who took the exam. A truly tremendous achievement. Congratulations to the following students. Sophia Bracco, Michael De Senna, Catherine Grazzi, Elena Hegges. Congratulations to these exceptional students. I'd now like to recognize one student in the senior class who earned her place as a National Merit semifinalist. This student performed in the top 1% of all graduating high school students in the nation on the PSAT exam, which puts her in approximately the top 16,000 students of all students taking the exam. A remarkable achievement. Semifinalists will have an opportunity to advance in the various competitions that the Merit Scholarship awards. This student has taken advantage of the various programs we offer here at Southside High School and has used these programs to get her to this incredible place in her academic career, including science research, our advanced music ensemble, and our IB Diploma Program. Her hard work is truly paying off and we're very proud of her. Congratulations to Sophia Bracco. So at this time, I'd ask all the students who were recognized through these programs to come up for a photo. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge our student government leadership who are here with us tonight. As the principal of this high school, I rely heavily on these exceptional students to be role models and take an active role in enhancing the student experience at Southside. I thank them very much for their service and commitment to our school. I'm going to start with each of the class presidents for each of the grade levels. For 9th grade, Matthew Connolly. For 10th grade, Ellie Lennon. For 11th grade, Aaron Weisenberger. For 12th grade, Lucy Reardon. Our treasurer is Kyla Murphy. Secretary Christopher Diaz. Vice President I, Jack Alcock. Vice President II, Maeve Ferick. And President Nicholas Alborano. Again, one final congratulations to all of our students being recognized tonight and congratulations to their parents who are here with us as well. We appreciate all the work that you've done in your work with your children and we're so pleased to work with them each and every day. So congratulations to all involved.
Yes, on behalf of the board, we would like to echo and congratulate you all and thank you for your service to our school community. Before any student leaves, would anyone like to come up and address the board? That's the next item on our agenda, opportunity for students. Okay, thanks again. Mr. Gavin, superintendent's report?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to start off this evening's report by informing the community that this past Tuesday, one of our students narrowly missed being hit by a car while crossing Hempstead Avenue on their way home from school. As our community residents know, Hempstead Avenue is a highly trafficked road, especially during student arrival and dismissal. Speaking on behalf of the Board of Education, I can say that we are all extremely grateful that our student was safe and unharmed. I've been in contact with the child's parents and conveyed our shared relief. I can also express our board's commitment to ensuring the safety and well-being of our students. Their commitment matches my own. Since the report of the incident occurred, we have taken several steps. First, we have worked with Mayor Murray and Police Commissioner Dodd to ensure that additional police officers have been on-site to assist with traffic conditions. Second, our Director of Security, Mr. Mitten, and I have been on-site as well during both arrival and dismissal to observe and see the situation. Third, I would like to thank Mayor Murray and the RVCPD for their cooperation and their willingness to work with us and work with the county to try and come up with common sense solutions that help ensure the safety of our students and parents. Mayor Murray informs me that he has also contacted Nassau County Legislatures, Galor, and Mulle for their assistance in this matter. One, since Hempstead Avenue is a county-controlled road, Mayor Murray is requesting that Nassau County conduct a traffic study, again, specifically focused on the traffic on and around Hempstead Avenue. Two, we are also exploring the timing of the lights at Dematte and Hempstead so that potentially they could mirror the all-red light approach that occurs right now on Long Beach Road and, what am I trying to say, Dematte over by the golf course. Third, we are also looking to add warning lights around existing stop signs that surround our schools, not just Hewitt, so that our approach to student safety is comprehensive. Four, as a student, as a school district, we are also engaging the RVCPD to conduct safety assemblies at our elementary and middle schools that focus on traffic safety over the next few months. Our Director of Security, Mr. Mitten, will be coordinating this effort. We appreciate and share the concerns of our parents and community members and will work collaboratively with the village and Nassau County to continue to advocate for the safety of our students. In closing, during my visits to observe, I spoke to and listened with several parents, and we agreed that while we study this issue and look for these approaches, that we should take the common sense approach and use the crosswalk that exists right now on the corner so that we can try to avoid any dangerous situation until we can come up with some more solutions. So I just wanted to give that out there right now, Madam President, because I know it's been something on the community's mind.
Thank you. To echo Mr. Gavin, the board is committed to the safety of all of our students and families. We fully support the continued partnership with the village and county to examine the ways in which we can continue to provide safer environments for all of our students. We have received several emails since Tuesday after our agenda was published. If there's anyone that would like to address the board at this time, only on that topic of Hewitt safety, we would like to open the mic at this time.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Ferick. I'm a resident of Rockville Center and I have three small children who attend Hewitt Elementary School. On Tuesday, I witnessed a near tragedy as a group of children and adults attempted to cross Hempstead Avenue just north of Hewitt. The car directly in front of me amazingly was able to swerve and jam on the brakes, and a horrible tragedy was narrowly avoided. I promptly reached out to the board and to Mr. Gavin, and I want to thank you for your prompt response and for immediately consulting with security and with Mayor Murray. As you are now aware, the larger issue at hand is that there is only one crossing guard to cross nearly 475 children safely. The guard is stationed on the corner of Dematte and Hempstead. However, hundreds of kids live north of Dematte, and many parents who pick up their kids must park and walk from north of Dematte, and there is no crosswalk, no light, no crossing guard. And even if, as suggested, we all walk a quarter of a mile out of the way, often with other children in tow, to cross at that one corner, is it actually safe for that many children and adults to be walking en masse through the intersection? Hewitt pick-up and drop-off is chaotic every single day, as it should be, at 8:45 and 3:30, but I think we've reached a tipping point. So far, we've been very lucky that no one has been seriously injured or killed. Going back several years, the community has petitioned for a crossing guard and has been told it's a budgetary issue from the school district, who then punted to the village. It is my understanding that the village allocates a certain number of crossing guards and then the district is responsible for placing them throughout the town. How can it possibly be that during summer ACE program at Hewitt, we're able to have two crossing guards, but during the school year, it simply can't be done? If it's an issue of simple reallocation or rebudgeting funds, let's handle our business right here and right now, within the district and within the village, without having to use the county. If, because Hempstead Ave. is a county road and we have no jurisdiction as a village, we must advocate together, as a community, as a school district, to Nassau County. Can't we join forces to lobby the county and show them that they have effectively created an attractive nuisance? Future litigation is inevitable if we continue on in this way. In years past, we have requested a traffic study. We have called upon several New York State legislators, all to no avail. We have emails from both Judy Griffin and Councilman Desposito dating back to 2021, whereby Nassau County had agreed to do a study of Paddock Lane and Hempstead Avenue, which would include pedestrian count, compliance rate with buses, by cars, speed limits, et cetera. After several failed attempts to learn the fate of that study, their office simply went radio silent. The people who represent us must do better at the county level. It's time for us to band together to cut through all of the bureaucratic red tape and make our village safer for our children. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Gavin, you'll make sure those topics are a part of the ongoing discussion. Thank you.
Jeff Greenfield, citizen taxpayer. This is a topic near and dear to my heart. I applaud Mr. Gavin and members of the community and the school board for taking immediate action. Twenty-three years ago, my daughter was struck by a car on Hempstead Avenue in front of the temple and wound up in NUMC in intensive care and in a coma. Thank God she's a lawyer today and giving me orders. She thinks she's my parent now, and she's fully recovered and has a beautiful little five-month-old baby. But nothing was worse than getting that phone call and being driven by the police to NUMC. No experience a parent ever should experience. That led to my years of advocacy with respect to the Hewitt School cutoff for the buses as well as the speed cameras. The public, I think, post, my own personal observation, post-COVID, is always in a rush and always late and very disrespectful. A stop sign is just a suggestion, much less all the other issues we have. But I would like to tell you there's a few advances in traffic safety that were put into play in Lynbrook, where they had similar problems in front of Lynbrook High School and the crossings. They now have flashing lights when someone comes into the zone to cross, as well as presses the button for the crosswalk. But even where there is no light for the crosswalk, there's a sensor there, and the village of Lynbrook advocated for this, and they installed it, and you could witness it yourself there, and it's pretty effective. And also, the high school kids that cross wherever they want now go towards this crosswalk. And I think that, I know that I live north of Hempstead Avenue, Hewitt School, I'm not an affected parent, but I know to stay away from the area during dismissal, and I work around Virginia and the other way if I have to head. But I would hope that you would install or get the county to install this warning device as well as a crosswalk by Paddock Lane, because people aren't going to go to the corner, let's be honest, especially if it's in Clement weather and they're parked across the way. I think it's a personal, you know, I would help whatever I can on this issue. And I think it's a reasonable request of the county, and after all, it is an election year in the town and the county legislature this year. It's a good time for advocacy, trust me. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
I'm with you. I'll take my shot with her personality.
Okay, turning to items for information. Mr. Gavin, we have the external auditors presentation.
That's right. Each year, we have a public presentation on our external auditors that our external auditors provide for the district financials, and we'd like to invite our auditors up to conduct their presentation. Tom?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I was going to go over the audit results of the 2023 financial statements as well as the audit. The financial statement and audit reports were reviewed with the committee and the Board of Education. We are going to be issuing clean and modified opinions, excuse me, of those financial statements, the actual classroom activities, as well as a single audit. We did not come across any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or anything of that nature you may be aware of. And as you can see at the bottom of the one sheet handout we gave out, the fund balance at year-end is $16.1 million, and there's a breakout of the reserves as well as the unassigned, which is below the 4%, which is a New York State requirement. So you are pretty significantly below that, 2.3%. At this point, I want to turn it to the Board of Education and see if they had any questions, concerns on the audit or the financial statements.
Any comments or questions from board members? I thank you for all your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did the public ask a quick question before they leave?
Items for visitors.
Is this being posted online?
It is. It's posted online, Mr. Green. It will be, yes.
Yes, they had, they posted on.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Okay, math curriculum review process?
Sure. Today, we are joined, tonight, excuse me, we are joined by two dynamic educators, Dr. Moriarty and Dr. Dias, who will be presenting. As the board knows, we have a goal this year to review our math curriculum, and they are here to present the process with which we will undertake this review and some of the outcomes that we hope to make. So Nicole and Samantha are ready to go.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Thank you, Board of Education, for inviting us this evening to discuss our review of the mathematics curriculum. So we just want to remind the community that one of our Board of Ed. goals is to establish a five-year curriculum review cycle for all district curriculum, with each of the four major subject areas being reviewed every five years. One full year will be designated to each content area. So last year was our ELA review, and while we're really not done with our ELA work, we're continuing our ELA work, working on the recommendations that came from last year's review, we have now also started our math review. So our focus this year will be on math, K-12, and it will be a collaborative process, much like the process that we engaged in last year. Of course, tweaking some stuff, because as we went through the process last year, we learned, and as we learned, we apply immediately. So we will include all schools like we did last year, so it will be K-12 and representative of all the elementary schools. We will have teacher teams. Those teacher teams will be inclusive of our classroom teachers in the K-5 level, as well as our math experts, and then our math teachers and administrators in the upper grades. And we will also include our stakeholders, our parents, our students, and through our structures that we currently have, such as our PTA Curriculum Committee or our committees that we have with our students, where we go and we talk to them and we ask them for their feedback on what their educational experience is like. So our committee's goals are like, our purpose really, is for us to build upon the strong foundation created by our teachers and to continue to foster teacher efficacy and capacity. So basically here, we want to grow what we know already works. We want to work with our strengths and we want to enhance the programs that we already have, while ensuring that our teachers are intimately involved in this process and that they are empowered to help make any improvements that we deem we want to make as a committee. We also want to strengthen our math identities, as well as cultivate mathematical mindsets in ourselves as the educators, as well as our students. And we want to dive deeply into our relationship with math. So much like last year, we're going to approach this with a backward design, and we're going to utilize a mental model or a mind map called, what we call here in our district now affectionately call, the game board of change. It is utilized, this mind map is utilized by highly successful organizations when they're looking at their current state and where they would like to go, and they want to take a 30,000-foot view and take all emotion out of it and really look at it with facts and details and what is actually really happening. So the first step is starting with a shared vision. What does and what should mathematical instruction look like, sound like, and feel like? And what is the experience we want all of our students to have? And what is the experience that we want all of our teachers to have as they're engaging in math with our students? After we frame that out collectively, and parents will be involved in this too when we are with our PTA Curriculum Committee, then when we backtrack and we say, okay, where are we currently now? What are our strengths? And what are our areas of challenges that we can turn into opportunities for growth? So right now, I can say, one of our strengths is that we really get really good results with our math outcomes year in and year out. Another really strong strength that we have right now is that we are cohesive and aligned K-5 with a math program. And then we want to look at our challenges. So a challenge could be, for instance, well, we just went through our ELA review and now we're focusing on math. How are we doing one and then doing the other? So really working with our teachers and ensuring that we can do all of these things and we can do all of these things well. Another challenge could be, how do we get everybody in the room and still yet make sure that we are teaching our classes and have articulation from the elementary school to the middle school, and the middle school to the high school, to ensure that we have that alignment and that cohesion? Once we have our strengths and we have our challenges, what we engage in then is a forcefield factor analysis, where we're looking at all of the things that are pushing us toward our vision, and we're looking at all the things that might be holding us back from attaining our vision. And that's when we then, as a group, collectively decide what we're going to prioritize to make as recommendations for us to work on over the course of the following year. So before we begin the overall process, I want us just to ground ourselves in what the foundation of effective mathematical curriculum instruction is about. So first, there needs to be a focus, and a focus on the major concepts, and that comes through the work with our standards. Then we want to look at coherence. What is the progression of mathematics and the mathematical standards that we see from grade level to grade level so that we ensure that there is alignment and that there is cohesion and that there's a natural, organic progression for our learners? Then we also want to look at the rigor. How are our tasks aligned with the conceptual understandings that our students need to walk away with in a mathematical classroom? And all of this is grounded in cognitive complexity. So basically, how are we looking at all of our work and ensuring that we're helping our students access this curriculum, access this material through the correct level of difficulty? And this is what we're going to go through this evening. We also want to keep in mind the standards of mathematical practice. So our eight mathematical practices are listed right here, and they're here for your reference. But what's important to know about these mathematical practices is that it represents a way of thinking about mathematics that all children can benefit from and are based on years of research from the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics and the National Research Council. And it provides teachers with a way to engage children in thinking about mathematics, not just doing mathematics.
So as we continue to explore the mathematical practices, we are currently in the process of examining and analyzing the next generation learning standards for mathematics. And so these are some of the guiding questions that we ask our math experts. First, we usually start off with, are there any new standards for any specific grade level? Are there any modifications that need to be made? And are any clarifications? Once that work has been completed and analyzing our work, we begin to unpack the standards through a standards progression analysis. This allows us to take a look at domain-specific standards, where we can look at the foundational knowledge that students should possess as they begin or enter a specific grade level. Then we look at the grade level connections that will be made throughout the course of a school year, and then thinking about the subsequent knowledge that students will acquire as they begin to continue throughout the learning continuum across the board. It also allows us to think about how we can ensure that we are providing the appropriate level of difficulty for our learners, ensuring that we're meeting their needs. And this works in tandem with the MTSS plan that's currently in place, as well as working on our win period or what I need period. Once we've completed our progressions analysis, we then begin to take a look at the tasks. We ensure that our learning tasks are in alignment with the progressions, and so it's an opportunity for us to ensure that learning experiences allow our learners to develop a profound mathematical discourse around specific content standards, as well as shifting their thinking, moving from concrete conceptual understanding to more abstract thinking. And then finally, being able to look at rigor and relevance. How do we ensure that we're providing all learners with what they need at the specific and correct level of difficulty?
So once we engage in those three steps, looking at our standards and ensuring that we have them all covered and everything that was new or moved is accounted for, and we're looking at our progressions, and we can outline what our students should know coming in, what they're going to be learning during that grade level, and how it is aligned and there's coherence to the standards that they will be seeing as they progress through our mathematics curriculum, through the grades. And then we identify our tasks and the high degree of alignment to those standards and to those progressions. We then want to pull it all together and evaluate our entire curriculum, K-12, to a rubric, much like we did last year for the ELA curriculum. for the ELA curriculum. We felt as though that was a very big strength of ours, to have some kind of criteria that helped us define what high-quality curriculum and instruction and assessment looks like. So we, the criteria that we chose came from a consortium from Connecticut, Massachusetts, and New York. It is recommended by New York State for those of us that want to analyze our work. And it shows that there's a, we want to look for the high degree of alignment to the depth of standards, the key shifts of focus within the standards, the instructional supports and assessments that we have that are all a part of our curriculum. Ultimately, this will provide us with a context for expanding conversations into the areas of instructional practice and assessments for our learners. So basically, we're talking about the implementation of everything that we will have just gone through. So how will we know that we're successful? Well, one of, one of the things that are going to help guide us are these questions that we came up with, and they're very similar to our ELA questions from last year. We felt as though that was also another strength. So we're going to keep these at the forefront of our mind as we progress through the different stages of our review. And then we're going to ultimately look at the outcomes for our students. And our success is going to be analyzed and evaluated by a plethora of different, you know, success criteria measures. How many students are taking college-level courses? What are our outcomes looking like on our assessments? How are kids responding to the instruction? And are they having fun? And are they thinking about math through a mathematical lens? And are we cultivating mathematical talent in all of our learners? And we're going to be very happy to be able to report out on our recommendations at the end of this school year that will also indicate the success of the process that we have just undergone. So we thank you for your time.
Thank you both. Comments or questions from the board?
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to hear how this setup works, how you're able to slot in a different subject and sort of follow the plan that you started last year in terms of the curriculum review. I can't take credit for this line, but I heard it at a conference, and something that you said reminded me of it, that teachers don't teach math, they teach children math, right? So focusing on involving all of those stakeholders at every step of this process, I think, is so important and keeping that, you know, attention on these human relationships, right? We think of math as calculating, but as you mentioned, this sort of inquiry-based approach to math starts at the early grades. I just wonder, from your committee setup, just seeing that, you know, math is so different, K to 5, middle school and high school, do your teams break out into those specific groups with math specialists, or is it all of your work altogether, K to 12?
So we're doing a little bit of both. We have our large committee. We're structuring it very much like what we did last year with our CAD robotics and our coding, where we have our large committee that meets about three or four times. And then we have our subcommittees, and those subcommittees will be more grade-level specific with math experts helping lead us. And we've already started this work last year at the middle school, which I would like to say is another one of our strengths, and working with somebody from Bosse's who comes in and works with me and the administration, and then works with our grade-level teams, we have been able to see great success with that model. So using a little bit of both.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
To follow up on that, Dr. Moriarty and I have met with all the different sixth-grade teachers, seventh-grade teachers, eighth-grade teachers in math, just to talk about that work that we did last year, meaning have they seen a difference in how we were able to align topics differently? And their response was overwhelmingly positive, and they're excited about the work that we're going to continue to do this year. Our next step is the high school.
That's great. I think that's so important to start with teachers, right? I mean, as parents, I see my children. I know what their math homework looks like. I know how their friends are experiencing math class, but teachers see large populations, large trends year over year, pre-COVID, COVID, post-COVID. I think that there, you know, there must be a sort of trajectory that they can plot for us in a larger picture. That has got to be helpful for your committee. Thank you.
I also think to follow up on that, I also think you'll see when the elementary and that we do our data presentations during the month of November, you'll, and actually, next meeting, I think we start one. But when we start to do our, you know, our either middle school or elementary or high school data presentations, you'll start to see how this analysis is going to inform the committee work. So we've started that, that work on data analysis with the administrators. The next step is to bring that conversation public, to talk about what the data means and what it doesn't, and then make pragmatic decisions as we go through our curriculum review.
Thank you as well. This is a great overview, and I think it's a little, I mean, it seems simple, right? It's only a few slides, but like the amount of work that it's going to take to actually accomplish this is substantial. One of you said, like, how do we ensure providing student, that we're providing students what they need at the correct level of difficulty? I mean, that's like, I mean, that's the crux of it, but that's also the hardest thing a teacher has to accomplish, right, with all the different kids in their classroom? So I'm looking forward to just seeing the progress over the course of the year. A couple of questions just came to mind. So you did mention someone from Bosse's. Are there other professional development things happening related to this or not currently?
So not currently. We're doing it in-house with the guidance of Guy Carty from Bosse's, who is a mathematics specialist. And then we do have administrators at the high school level who are also math, were math teachers and math specialists. And then later in the spring, I do have somebody coming in to work, math expert at the K-5 level, who's going to come in and work with our K-5 math teachers. So to, for us to develop a plan for what it's going to look like next year for our K-5 teachers. Two of those K-5 math teachers right now go to the National Conference for Teaching Mathematics and another NCSM or something like that. They go to two conferences, and they bring all of those, that information back with all of the resources, and then we engage in studies together. Our other person will then come and then help us solidify a plan.
Great. So Mr. Gavin mentioned the data presentation. I, I do think it's important to meld the two, right, because they don't exist in a vacuum. So I'm glad you mentioned that as part of the process for the year. And I know you mentioned working with the curriculum committee to get input from stakeholders. I would, I was on the curriculum committee. I think it's a great resource, but if there's a way that we could get a little bit more feedback from people that perhaps are not connected to that committee, just to hear the experience of what it's like.
Helping your child at home.
Helping your child at home. And I, I think it ties into, because one of the things I love about the, whatever you want to call it, new math, is it is teaching thinking, right? But I think for, as parents on the other side who grew up either identifying as math people or I'm not a math person, it does become a struggle at home for a lot of families when their child is coming home with a new way of doing things, and it's not, the parent feels ill-equipped to help their child. And I know it's not technically curriculum, but maybe we could brainstorm ways to just help parents know how to better, and maybe, I don't know the answers to that, but I think that's a key component of.
I think it started with our new K-5 handbook. So I think having a lot of the math resources on there as, as a resource that people can go to, they may not know right now that they can go to it, or they may not access it as frequently as we would like. But another thing that we have to do is ask them, what, how can we help you with this? So maybe a little survey of our parents about what are the things you would like to see from us on how to support your child in the area of mathematics, might give us a little bit, give them a range of options, might give us a number of different things that we could do here. I know we've done parent universities in the past. I know that we've had parents in to show them. We've had math nights. So some of them are very well-attended, and sometimes depending on when you schedule them, they're not so well-attended. But I think the idea of asking, how can we reach you best, I think would be something that we can certainly do and outreach, have that outreach for.
That would be great. And again, just thanks for the, for the work. This is a heavy lift. Thank you.
They don't really sleep, the two of them. To, to say that Dr. Diaz has, you know, basically jumped in feet-first is, has been, she's been a welcome addition to the team. Dr. Moriarty works and works and works and works, and she has come right there and been a great addition. So we're super excited about the team we put in place.
Thank you both for your work, and it's nice to see you, Dr. Diaz. I love seeing what you're doing for us and with us. One of the things that, you know, when we did our goals for the year and we kind of moved the ELA process into kind of phase two, and we put math in phase one, it kind of makes me think that there should be some interdisciplinary talking between these two committees because math has become so word-heavy. When we were kids, we, to Janet's point, we weren't thinking as much about what we were doing. We're stacking numbers and computing them, and now kids are taught, why does this make sense? So much of their work is word problems and being able to interpret what they're being asked to solve. So I think if we can find that cross-committee work, I think that would be really great to hear about, how one impacts the other. Maybe some other things, just hopefully to come out of committee, to Dr. Downing's point, you know, breaking it up. I'm interested to know if we're assessing kind of tactile things that students in K to 5 use to solve problems, some of the things like the demonstratives that they might need that maybe we could support, just creative ways that students use math now that, again, we didn't use when we were kids, but maybe there's things we can help in budget time, support initiatives. So maybe that can come out of committee when it comes to K to 5. And then on the, on the older side, when I was at back-to-school night in the high school this year, I was like thrilled to hear that our advanced math topics elective is booming and that there are so many students in these classes. And that shows not only an aptitude for math, but an interest in math. So we have this many students that are taking these electives. I think the teacher said he had two sections of 30 in the grade that I'm in with my student. I was encouraged to think about, what other pathways are we kind of creating? And I know we've talked a lot about pathways, but when we have students that have this interest and aptitude for math, what are we kind of carving out for them to follow so that they, when they get to 11th and 12th grade and they're going to go into those fields that we have set them up for success post-K to 12? So just some things to think about in committee for maybe kind of outside the scope of just what we're doing, but what can we prepare our students to do? Those are really my comments. I just wanted to say thank you.
Just to follow up on the math courses, Dr. Walsh and I and Ms. McGinn and I have already talked about a number of different electives or new courses that we're considering for next year. Matter of fact, we have to pump the brakes a little bit because we had a brainstorming session where we, we generated quite a list. So we also have to remember that at the end of the day, we have 250 to 220 kids in a grade level, and we're going to run out of options at some point, but we'll run out of students for those options. But for the most part, we're really excited about some of the things that we're thinking about for next year. And to go back to your idea of interdisciplinary, I think you'll see that some of the recommendations coming forward are interdisciplinary in terms of, or will be interdisciplinary in terms of, how do we combine an understanding of mathematics with, say, business or finance, or how do we combine mathematics with some of our integrated curriculum that we're already building on the elementary level? So I think you'll see some of that crossover as, as part of the work, but you'll also see it as part of the recommendations we have for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm very excited that math is up on the dock to take a closer look at. I think this has kind of been a long time needed. I appreciate the plan. I think it's just like the ELA was. I think it's a solid plan to approach a curriculum review, and I was really impressed with what came out of last year's review. So I'm sure this year will be just the same. I did have a couple of like questions and kind of comments, I guess, things that I'm thinking about going into this review. You know, specifically looking at not just the curriculum that we're offering and how it is aligned vertically and horizontally, but also the models in which we are presenting math, like, not presenting math, but that we offer math classes. No, I know in Algebra I right now, we are implementing a team-taught model, and I have questions and concerns about the efficacy of that model, if we're getting the results from that model that we're investing into it. So I would love to know, you know, how we plan to look at that this year, what data we can collect to really see if the team teaching model, and this is separate from the integrated co-teaching model, so I don't want to confuse the two. You know, if that, if that model is really working to the extent that we want it to. I'm also very curious about our support sections. I do appreciate getting that data. Thank you. And it is nice to see that the number of students enrolled in support has decreased. However, the section numbers have not decreased significantly. So that's something, again, from a fiduciary standpoint, I'd like to take a look at that as well, looking at our master schedule, why we still are offering that many sections of support, and then how many kids are actually enrolled. Like, if there's three kids in the class, can we combine and condense those? I'm also thinking about, now that we have an option for the eighth-grade math, so not all students have to go into Algebra I if they elect not to, does it still make sense that we're compacting curriculum for everyone in grade six and seven, where we're still requiring at those foundational years, students to move through curriculum at a much quicker pace than they need to, if they're ultimately going into Math 8? And then what is the repetition there? So thinking about sixth grade as a standalone, to seventh grade, could, could that become an option as well? Do we just start differentiating at grade eight for those options? Because I think in math, more specific than most subjects, there's a confidence level there, where if you're feeling confident in your ability, you're going to get better outcomes. And I think it's very easy to get beaten down in math very quickly for many students. So I would hate to see that happen in grade six and seven for a child who will ultimately go into Math 8, having to go at that pace. And I'm also wondering too, as part of the curriculum review process, in talking with our teachers about their experiences, what's going well, what we should continue doing, what's not going well, and what maybe we should stop and reconsider, just really ensuring that, in that conversation, that we're providing like a psychologically safe place where teachers can talk openly. And I'm not saying that you don't provide that, but, you know, as a teacher myself, there's definitely people who you feel like you can comfortably state, this is how I really feel, and other people that you might not. So just really being sure that we're, we're giving teachers a chance to really express their feelings, positive or negative, and then taking that into account, because they are the boots on the ground. They are the ones who are experiencing this and can give us the best insight into how our students are doing. Those are my thoughts and questions, and again, I appreciate this review. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to follow up on a couple of things you said, because I think they're aligned. In terms of creating a safe space and looking at both 6 to 8 curriculum, you know, that's one of the reasons that we've already started meeting with our 6 to 8 math teachers. First was really to assess, you know, the impact of our consulting, like, take a look at the topics, are the topics that we've moved into different places or in different alignment, or we're doing less of or more of. Do those things make sense? The positive that I've gotten so far, and I, I basically said, you know, I offered them, whether or not they were going to tell the superintendent right away that they like something or don't like something, I can't speak for everyone, but I, we did give them the opportunity to say, what are the things that you need to support this, this, this instruction? What are the things that we can do on our end, and your principals can do on their end, to make sure that you feel successful in this endeavor? So a lot of the feedback that we had from 6, 7, and 8 particularly, because those, that's the, the grade levels that we started meeting with, has been super positive. They were first positive about the support. We talked about different, you know, different ancillary systems, like what are the online systems that they think might support the instruction that they're doing in the classroom? We talked about professional development or time. They really wanted more time. His name is Guy. I'm not just calling him a guy, but to come with Guy and work with, and work with him for more time together. So we already talked about, you know, balancing, like Dr. Moriarty said, they all want to be in the classroom all the time, right? So they, they, they have that professionalism. They have that dedication. They want to be in the classroom. And we try to balance that with the necessary work we need to do to make sure that our instruction in the classroom, like you said, instructional models, how we present things, all of those things are as effective as they can be. I think one thing that is really important is the slide about the progressions towards the standards. So you can have a standard, and it might be used in multiple grade levels, right? So fractions are covered in a multiple grade levels, right? But those progressions are, what are the skills it takes to get to that standard? And having those conversations are really valuable for a number of reasons. Number one, it helps our teachers obviously understand the, the standard. But number two, when they do, but a number two, it also provides us an instructional roadmap to build those skills. So for me, that was really the genius that they put together as part of this analysis of standards, which is, how do we not only unpack it, but how do we see how we can layer to it? And those conversations are deep and rich, and those conversations really unpack, like we all talked about, getting the experts in the room, and how do we teach math, and how do we teach math conceptually and then procedurally?
Thank you. So those conversations are still on?
So those conversations are still ongoing with the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. I was thinking perhaps it makes sense, not a formal board presentation, but at some point, maybe as part of your superintendent's report, or Dr. Moriarty can share with us just kind of a check-in on how it's going, at some point, maybe January or February, and just answer the questions that have been raised by the board here.
Would it make sense to do it as we start talking about new curriculum?
Sure.
Or new course offerings, are there things that we want to start to think about for the budget?
Sure, just a quick update on how it's going.
Okay.
Nothing formal, just, I think we're all curious.
Not 70 slides.
We just want to sneak peek, no.
You don't want 20 slides.
We just want to sneak peek into how it's going. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, turning to strategic communication, Mr. Gavin?
Sure, thank you. One of our goals for this year, one of the Board of Education's goals, is to develop a strategic communication plan. The vision for this is to strengthen our community's understanding and to foster trust. We have been working on a comprehensive document to work with, with the board and the community that outlines the themes, the action steps, and the deliverables. Tonight, I will share three primary themes and goals of the plan. First, our parents and community members are our audience. Especially important are the parent organizations that provide us so much support for our district efforts. Our PTA, SEP, Booster Club, and Sponsors of the Arts are all key groups to ensure that we make sure that we communicate with. We want to ensure that our parent groups understand the reason behind our steps, the programs we initiate, the budgets we offer. Local village officials, businesses, community organizations like the MLK Center and the Hispanic Brotherhood are also critical partners who must be involved and informed through this conversation. As everyone knows, good communication starts with listening. We actively listen to our parents and community members to continually ensure our shared values align with our educational programs, again, to foster the best potential outcomes we can for our kids. Our teachers, administrators, and students all need a voice in this process. Such steps as community surveys, focus groups, in-person meetings like faculty meetings for teachers, PTA meetings for parents, math nights, parent universities, all allow us the opportunity to interact, engage, and listen to our parents, so that we can act collaboratively. Our strategic communication plan will center around three major themes. First, each of these themes will contain some areas of overlap, so you see the Venn diagram behind me. And second, there are many different methods for communicating information aligned with these goals. So let's briefly look at the Venn diagram that captures the three main themes of our communication plan. Number one, we want to amplify excellence to provide our parents and community members with information about the outstanding programs we offer and the excellent outcomes our students generate each and every year. We saw an example of this tonight. We recognize our students' outstanding excellence. Each one of those students has been involved in a plethora of different courses and experiences that have led them to those achievements. Number two, co-create the future. Each and every day, our teachers wake up, our parents send their children off with the idea that we are going to equip our students for a better future. The best part about our job is that we get to work within a community and engage those parents in that conversation. So, our faculty and staff work each day to prepare students for an unknown future. How would we do this, what would this look like? Well, this could culminate in a multitude of ideas. When we do a budget presentation, that's part of what we do in order to tell everyone, this is some of the, these are some of the opportunities that together, we're going to co-create. The public is involved in the budget presentations, we have the opportunity to talk about not only instructional, but the capital work, all of those pieces all come together to co-create the future. Second, we could also talk about outlining new courses, new curriculum like we did here tonight, extracurricular activities, these are all different ways in which that we work with our community to co-create the future. Third, strengthen partnerships. The third theme of our communication efforts is strengthening partnerships. Our school community exists within the Village of Rockville Center and South Hempstead. Our school community benefits from strategically working with and establishing partnerships. Our communication efforts to build and expand partnerships might be discussing opportunities that might take the form of a meeting with Malloy or Hofstra to talk about a new residency program for teacher candidates. It might also talk about, so for example, with the universities, we might also engage in them to talk about, how do we get college credit for certain courses that students can take in high school? So I know that Dr. Walsh this year has done a lot of work around this effort, and we've been able to expand the number of college offerings that we have for our students. So, you used to take French VI and not get college credit for it, now you can. So, this additional opportunity that we can add for our students is another way that we establish strategic partnerships. It also might work out that, another example of partnerships is our DECA club partnering with a local business to foster a new social media ad plan. These are some of the things that we've already worked on this year. Our DECA club is one of those outstanding experiences that we need to cultivate and amplify, but that also shows, as I talked about before, the overlap here. So we have a partnership, we engage with the community about that, and we end up generating and amplifying excellence. At the same time, our students are starting to see a future they've been waiting for. I like this idea of being in business. I like the idea that I'm working on social media, or I'm learning customer service, or I'm learning how to do basic accounting or bookkeeping. So, these are all things where we can see overlap between all three different goals and areas. Finally, so with those themes in mind, how do we start? Well, like I said before, the best communication starts when you listen. Our first step will be a survey of parents and teachers to gain insight on several topics. First, communication engagement. We have a strategic communication goal. Let's ask the community what types of communication works for them. Building of facilities, we're going to ask a few quick questions to ask our public to rate our facilities and share more feedback. Student skills and challenges for the future, we're going to ask our community members to prioritize the skills they believe our students will need in the future to be successful. Then we will ask for which, excuse me, then we will ask which challenges our community members think that are necessary for the district to consider as we move forward. Like we talked about at our last board meeting, the first survey that we've ever done was how are we doing? So that was a climate survey. So, how are we doing? How do you think we're doing on the work that we do? This survey is more about where are we going? And helping us try to lay the foundation for a strong instructional plan aligned with district priorities and community priorities that is going to serve for the best possible outcomes for our kids. Finally, we will also ask about financial priorities, the district's priorities from a financial perspective. So for example, we will ask about UPK. Right now, we currently have UPK, our UPK program is housed in Oceanside at the JCC, they're wonderful partners. We want to know what our community thinks about, is it enough? Is it too far? Is there something else we should be looking at? So we'll offer a number of options for people to consider as we talk about UPK. But when we talk about that, we know that if we want to bring UPK, say, for example, to a building, then that has spacing impact. So we want to make sure that we clearly communicate around that and the potential budgetary impacts it may have. We will begin introducing this survey at our October and November PTA and SEP meetings. The survey will go out to parents, families, and teachers during November. After two weeks, the survey will close, and the leadership team and the board will unpack the data. Based on that, I'll present our next steps to the community and the board in February as we begin the budget process. I'm excited to listen, learn, and lead this collective effort to co-create the future of our district. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Comments or questions from the board?
Really a question, just a comment. I think as a community member myself, I just want to thank you and your whole team, because I think that we've had such an increase, Mr. Bartels when you are interim superintendent, Mr. Gavin as our superintendent, you really have done a lot of listening over the last two years plus, and I really just wanted to say thank you, because I do feel the community feels more heard. We went through our kind of ups and downs, and we had COVID, and we had all of these challenges we had to deal with at the time, but we're really on a good, steady trajectory of good communication going back and forth. I feel that people, even tonight, you just, you answered a concern immediately to parents that have a valid concern. It's those types of things, timely and, you know, purposeful communication, and it just means a lot and it does build trust. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. I think it really is going a long way, so looking forward to this, and I think that we can just always get better. But, I know that there's very specific things you have in mind, but overall, we already feel it, so just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed, thank you. We will be attending PTA meetings upcoming in October and November, just to discuss this communication plan and to answer any questions about it, and also discuss our board goals as well. Thank you again. Turning to policies. At stage one, we have 1310, powers and duties of the board. This was an update in legal language. The suggested additions, any comments or questions?
It basically just tracks the statute.
Good? Thank you. 6540, defense and indemnification of board members and employees. No revisions necessary?
No, no, and there are various statutes, they somewhat overlap, and they're slightly different procedural conditions precedents, some of them are 10 days, some of them are 15 days, some require notice, but that is the protections that we afford to the board members, the administration, teachers, all employees.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Celebrity will just update the adopted date once we adopt this policy then, so it reflects the fact that we read through it, okay? Thanks. Stage three, 3415, sexual harassment. Okay to move this, we've read this? Okay, thank you. Opportunity for superintendent.
Thank you, Madam President. First and foremost, on behalf of our school community, I want to say thank you, and a great deal of appreciation goes out to teachers, all of our teachers, on World Teacher Day, which was celebrated today. So thank you to all of our faculty, all of our staff, all of our administrators that have been working together to co-create a great future. I also want to shout out our aviation club, which was initiated by a young high school student with a passion for flying airplanes. The Southside High School Aviators Club, which began last year, took its first field trip to SUNY Farmingdale Aviation Center last week. Ms. Lynette Tiger, who is the assistant director of the facility, took the students on a tour and described the program that Farmingdale offers. The students had the opportunity to see not only the mechanic hangar where they employ mechanics to keep the planes running, but they also got a chance to sit in a flight simulator and take off and land a plane, which was really, really cool. They also had the opportunity, while they were doing that, to have a certified flight instructor giving them, you know, guidance as they were doing it. So even in the simulation, they just weren't left on their own. Lastly, they got a chance to see a classroom where the instruction occurs, and then had an opportunity to look at what the four-year course of study would look like. So it's a wonderful opportunity for our students that have this passion to avail themselves of a local community resource that they can use and work and see, hey, maybe this is for me, down the road. I also want to thank our 10th grade student, Michael Marmarali, who initiated the program, and I want to thank Mr. D'Angelo, who when he was approached by Mr. Marmarali last year and said, "I want to try this club," Mr. D'Angelo said, "Sounds cool to me, let's go." So, really thank you, we really thank you for them, and it's again, it's another opportunity where you put students in contact with great teachers, and they just take off. They just take off and they get to explore their passions, they get to see new things, and have a great experience. So, super excited for them, and that is my opportunity for student, for superintendent.
Thank you. What a wonderful story, that's what it's all about, really, that made my night. Opportunity for board members, Mrs. Messia.
Congratulations to all of our students who are recognized tonight for their academic achievements. Your hard work and dedication inspire us all, we're proud of your accomplishments. Additionally, congratulations to all of our students who have won leadership roles at the high school. I have no doubt that your passion and drive will contribute greatly to our school community, and we look forward to seeing all the positive changes you would bring. I'd also like to congratulate all of our middle school National Junior Honor Society inductees. Your effort with regards to your schoolwork and commitment to your community is commendable, and I look forward to hearing about all of your future successes. I'll echo Mr. Gavin, Happy World Teachers Day. I didn't even know this was a thing, I learned about it because Google Classroom wished me Happy Teachers Day, and that's the only thing that wished me Happy Teachers Day today. So I'm going to extend my gratitude to our teachers for all that they do. I sincerely appreciate the commitment and dedication that our staff has, you know, not only, has given not only to the academic growth, but also the social-emotional growth of our children. So, thank you faculty and staff for everything that you do every day for every one of our kids. I'd also like to thank Mr. Gavin and Mr. Mitten for immediately responding to arrival and dismissal safety concerns at Hewitt, and I'd like to thank the Rockville Center Police Department, as well as Mayor Murray's office, for their help in providing immediate support while we work together and in conjunction with the county towards a solution. In echoing, Mrs. Barry, please know that our students and family safety is paramount. And finally, I'd like to remind the community that our elementary and secondary parent university will be held this month. It's a great opportunity to learn about many of our district's academic programs. And additionally, our first rounds of family teacher conferences at the middle school and high school, this is a new undertaking, will be taking place later this month, so be on the lookout for communication on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hackett?
Also, congratulations to our students, you're doing wonderful things, and really thank you to those serving in student government. We understand what it's like to give of your time in leadership roles. You're doing your civic duty, so thank you all for serving. I am so blessed to have four wonderful teachers up here, so I have to also say Happy Teacher Day to my four co-board members here. I am the sore thumb that sticks out, and I'm not a teacher, but I appreciate you all very much, and appreciate all of our teachers within the district. It's been a great start to the school year, the whole, all the campuses are abuzz with activity, the sports, looking forward, I know, shows and concerts will be coming up too, and I love all of that. So, one other really positive thing, thank you, Mr. Bartels, for our great fiscal health, I think that that's a really important thing to note, that from our auditors and the work that you've done and your team, so thank you so much for that. I love having Mr. Mitten here, Dr. Diaz, I see Mr. Walsh in the back, Dr. Walsh, so we love having our guests coming, and we get to show everybody off and all the wonderful things you guys are doing, so thank you all.
You're about the regulars.
And the regulars, of course, you two.
Of course.
Of course, you two. A quick little anecdote, one of my first NISPA conferences I went to when I first became a board member, I sat in on a session, it was kind of more of a rural part of New York, I don't remember the district, but they did a presentation about how they kind of did a farm-to-business initiative. So they grew things in their garden because they had land, so I was just so interested, I went to the session, and it was all about how they grew the items, they cooked the items, they made a business from the items, they had the accounting, they had the bookkeeping, they had the sales. And I remember back then thinking, that's so cool, how creative this district is, and I have to say, just from being part of this initiative and everything we're doing here, I'm feeling so much closer to those types of things. I think we're doing so much more creative things, our students are going to benefit from all of these life lessons. Parents are constantly posting things saying, yeah, math and science and social studies, English, they're important, but kids need life skills, they need to how to communicate with people, speak to people. And you're all putting in so many different creative approaches that are going to help our students really succeed in life. And I think, if I could ever make a connection to that, that one conference session, that I'll never forget it, it was so inspirational. I really feel like we're there, and I feel like we have all of that available to us, so thank you all so much. And really, just let's keep up the good work and have a strong finish.
I just want to, a little piggyback on that. We just had an absolutely fantastic conversation with Mr. Bindle, who is taking that laser engraver to the next level. So in terms of like businesses and all sorts of stuff, it's coming soon to a theater.
I love it.
It's all good.
Thank you. You're realizing my dreams as a board member, so I really appreciate it, thank you.
Mrs. Gruner?
Thank you. First, I'm sorry I had to step out, I was in the middle of a coughing fit. So, I echo everything that my fellow trustees have already said, and in particular, I'd like to thank the teachers who've been staying after. There's been multiple presentations already given, 9th and 10th grade parents, IB, the parent university, which was great, I went last year and got a one-on-one with the business teacher, because I was the only person in the room, and she was there, and she was happy to talk to me. And so I, just, it's a long day to work, and then to stay after, it's appreciated by, you know, by the parents and the community. I'd also like to just thank the building staff, who had to deal with the weather last week, you know, thankfully the middle school roof mostly held up, but there were some leaks elsewhere, and a little bit in the old section, so thank you to them. And it's just been great seeing school in full swing, I mean, that's what it's about, so many good things for kids, so, good stuff happening.
Thank you. Dr. Down- Dr. Downing?
Agreed, agreed. Congratulations to all the students that we honored tonight with national recognition. That is a big deal. That is something that you should be proud of for a lifetime, and certainly we share in your success and your accomplishments there. Congrats to the student government representatives and class presidents. It's no easy feat to put yourselves out there, but it's really such a rewarding position, and again, another lifelong memory. Good luck to all of our students taking that PSAT next week. The bar has been set high by your elders who are here this evening. And it's computer-based, right? So this is an inaugural, computer-based PSAT, so best of luck. Thank you to Mr. Bartels for working with the auditors and ensuring our fiscal health. Thank you to Mr. Gavin for starting us off on this conversation about our strategic communications plan. Our communications can always be better, can always evolve and grow, as evidenced by your responsiveness this week. And in the vein of that collaboration in the Venn diagram, and to, and to Mrs. Hackett's point, we've seen these sort of external partnerships and collaborations, but also an increase in the internal collaboration where we have kindergartners and first graders working on a woodshop project, and we've had high school teams visiting with the mascot to the elementary schools. So there is that feeling of, of not just school spirit, but real strong district spirit. So thank you for all your work behind the scenes to make that happen. On that note of behind the scenes, thank you to Dr. Moriarty and Dr. Diaz for reviewing our math program. It's, it's just such an important thing to get right, right? I mean, there's, there's no limit to where math can take our students. They are growing in terms of degrees in computer science, artificial intelligence, business analytics, you know, data science. It, it all starts with a foundation that needs to be strong in K-12, so really important work there. Again, parent university is such a great example of collaboration, that homeschool connection that we're always trying to foster. And all of our community partners, in addition to all the teachers who've been staying late at night, we've all had PTA meetings, SEP meetings, Booster Club, Ed Foundation, all of these community partners have their programs up and running, and they really do provide such great enrichment opportunities for our students. So thank you for all of that. Good luck to all of our student athletes in full swing on your season, and we are cheering you on. Thank you.
We are certainly off to a great start. I think we've heard across the board here that we had a wonderful year last year, and we're building upon that success this year. One thing you've always said is that we, and our board and you, continuous improvement is something that we are always dedicated to, and we look forward to the rest of the year and seeing how it unfolds. So thank you very much. Okay, opportunity for visitors. The public is reminded to address questions or remarks to the board through its president. It's requested to refrain from making any direct references to students or staff members that could be considered critical of their performance or their character. Such references to individual students or staff members are inappropriate in a public forum and should instead be conducted in private conversation with appropriate members of the staff. The public is asked to state their name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Jeff Greenfield, citizen taxpayer, Huber Court. Last meeting, I asked a series of questions, and the school board didn't respond on more than one. People watching at home asked me why they didn't respond. I told them, ask the school board members. But I did call Mr. Bartels the next day and get some answers. Thank you. The tax bill arrived this past week, and rather than ask a question tonight and not risk not getting an answer, I decided to call the phone number on the bill, 255-8810. I called it more than once, and it was a fax machine. So I deem this to be a failure, so I'm going to ask a question now. It says that our rate from last year, on my bill at least, went up 2.13%. What did the voters approve last May? I don't remember, I'm getting all of that. I don't remember what the percentage was that we were asked to approve.
It's just under 2%.
What?
1.99.
1.99.
So why am I billed 2.13?
Go ahead. There's a, go ahead, yeah, it's a long, complicated answer, but go ahead.
It's a long, complicated answer.
Stop the clock. I don't want to get charged for the answer time.
We'll look into the phone number, Mr. Bartels, if you can cover the other one.
Well, I think that's easy to fix.
Yep.
So what?
So, all right, so there's a lot of differences that go into calculating the increase in the tax rate. We just increased the tax levy. The tax rate is calculated through a series of calculations which involve adjusted base proportions and the overall assessment changes, which are both done by Nassau County Assessors' Office. So that's the biggest change in why there's a difference in the actual rate increase.
Okay, I guess I shouldn't be upset it's not. We've had worse variances in prior years, correct?
Correct.
But when you found out about this in August, I remember private, in previous years, you don't find out in August?
We don't find out in August. It's been quite a long time since we found out in August. Right now, we found out about a week and a half ago.
I think it would behoove the school board to put it on the agenda and tell the public that, not let the public have to guess and imagine if there's a difference. The, the new security chief, is he under a contract or an employee?
He's under a contract.
Okay. And the transportation bids that are being voted on tonight, are they, were they bids or just extensions?
These I believe were all bids.
Oh, did we have more than one bidder?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
Refreshing. But it doesn't say that. And back to my point is, if we had more backup documentation for the public, and I think you should publicize that, it's something good, but I am concerned, watching News 12 about We Transport, and you're doing business with them and their ability to perform. And on the roof leaks, I was going to ask that, I'm glad they came out now while they're under warranty. No better test than the rain we had Friday. And finally, I apologize to everyone, I promised good weather on Yom Kippur, so you could do your striping, and I guess Hashem thought otherwise, and, and I, I hope you pick a, a day like maybe Columbus Day, Monday will be a better weather day for that.
Thank you.
Just want to address the transportation.
Sure.
Just for an issue. So you did bring up transportation. We have had a number of different bidders on the agenda tonight. You'll see some new contractors that we haven't seen before.
Those of you who brought that up, I never heard of these crazy names here.
So we do go through due diligence, we do check them out. There are various resources we can do. We get their driver abstracts from the companies, who's going to be driving with us, so we do do that. After the tragedy we had, I do go through the repair files for all of the different bus companies, and all of these bus companies that you see on there all meet our expectations as far as good, good buses that are in, in good shape, good order.
So good maintenance standards.
Good maintenance standards.
We always do that anyway, that's part of the practice that we do.
I, I never heard of Cheese Bus Company and Stork, what is Stork delivering of the?
That's, that's, that's why I mentioned it. There's some new bus companies on there that they do meet all of our requirements, including insurance requirements, drive, providing driver abstracts, meeting the maintenance of the buses, so we do do our due diligence for all of those.
Refreshing to hear we had bids, but from this notice, I wouldn't know that, and I think you should publicize.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can we have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Receipt of financial reports. Second?
Second.